We are live. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founder Greg Kilwin, in the middle of our Brady Bunch huddle here. We also have Jessica, Colin, Kim, and Julie from our team. Hello, you guys. Good to all here. We're just listening to Amanda today. And we also have a very special guest with us today, Pastor Paula. We are going to be getting into some really fun stuff, some fun show and tell here today. But before we do that, just a little bit of housekeeping. First, if you've never been on one of these calls before, welcome. We are so excited to have you here. This is a time that we take an hour out of every week to sit down and help young living brand partners to grow their business. It's usually in the context of how you use your good oiling system to do so, but that is not the exact full extent of the topics that we cover. So if you're finding yourself here and it is in your heart and in your, your goals to grow a young living brand partner business, we are a place for you to come and hang out, get support, get inspired and take action. So your teams are welcome here. You are welcome here and we're so excited to have you here. We do this every week at noon Eastern. And today, we are going to do a little bit of show and tell. And as you guys are coming in, I would love to maybe have you share in the chat, where are you coming in from? What are you excited to learn about today? If you are on our email list, then you know that the topic today is quite exciting. For those of you who are fond of doing workshops, for those of you who are interested in building faith-based teams, for those of you who are interested in sharing the oils of ancient scripture, whether that be kits that Young Living offers, or specifically taking these things into applications to show and share and grow in your communities. Paula, who is with us today, is a retired pastor who is now focusing on growing a young living brand partner business and has been growing an amazing community, faith-based community, and hosting these workshops on on oils and ancient scripture. And so we're going to be talking about not just what Paula does today and actually show you some of the really cool stuff she's been doing with her good oiling site. But guys, Paula has created resources that if you are wanting to host these types of workshops in your communities, she's got a way to help you get that done. And she's already really done most of the work for you and will show you how to be successful in the approach. So we're going to get into all of that today. We go over to the chat. By the way, if you're here today and you needed help with something, right? If you're here and you're like, oh, I'm stuck on this thing. I'm trying to figure something out and you need help. We do have dedicated space for this. At any point, you can hit the Q and A and type in whatever your question is. And if it's something that needs to be viewed and kind of walked through, if you need some handholding to walk through or to try to troubleshoot, fix a particular problem today, definitely put that in the Q and A as well. We will make some dedicated time for those questions at the close of our call today. So we get some excited people about oils of the Bible class. That was the most exciting one that Ilka has done. Excellent. We've got Fairfax, California, want to grow a strong business. Tech is the largest issue. You're a theologian. So wow, what a day. Yes, that's awesome. Perfect day for you to be here. Good evening from Swaziland. Good to be here. Thank you for coming, Gil. Excited to see you. Hello. Oh, my gosh, Birmingham, Tucson, Texas, all over the place, British Columbia, Indianapolis. You guys were so, so honored to have you here today. Oh, hi Heidi, and thank you. These are from Africa, actually. They're recycled paper. Yeah, so thrilled to have you. Hi, from Jerusalem. You guys are all over the world. Finland, Ontario. Casey Mo, what's up? Okay, y'all. Big, big happy crowd from everywhere today. All right. So without further ado, I, again, we see more and more of our global community showing up here today. It's so exciting. How many of you guys are here like with bells on? Because you know what we're learning about today and you know who we're learning from and you're excited to take this kind of information to your communities. Show me a show of hands. How excited are you to unite faith, oils and sharing, right? And to see how this is done. So, so excited. Paula, I'd like to put the spotlight on you here so everybody can see you. Hello. This is Paula Barans, everybody. Paula, we're so honored to have you here today. Would you please maybe just open us up and with, you know, just a little bit about you? So we all know who we're hearing from today.
Sure. First, I'd like to say thank you to Get Oiling for inviting me to share with you today. I'm really, really excited about this and can't wait to see, you know, what the Lord's going to do with this. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Paula Barans. I am an ordained pastor in the United Methodist Church, recently retired from the pulpit, but still serving the Lord, but just in different ways. I'm also a young living brand partner, of course. And you know, I love, I love young living. I love young living and don't know what I'd do without young living also. I've had my Get Oiling website for a little over two years, I think, and I just absolutely love that too. Not only are their built-in pages beautiful right out of the box, y'all already know that, but they have all kinds of exciting tools to create your own customized homepage with your own brand, if that's your thing. And I, the thing that I love the most, I think, about young living is the ability to build lead magnets. And I've got one that just happened to touch on something that a lot of church folks are interested in. I created it a few months ago and it has generated over 350 new leads so far. That is not particularly oily. In fact, it's not, it's not oily at all. It's a free clergy stall pattern that I offer. And evidently, there are a lot of people out there in the pews who want to make a clergy stall as a gift for their pastor, but they just don't know how to get started. Anyway, the number of new leads is growing daily for me. Hardly does a day go by without at least one to four brand new leads hopping into my contact manager. And I don't have to do anything, just ding, and there they are. And so I've been trying to work really smart, getting my campaigns ready to bring these folks into the natural living lifestyle. Because that's, that's the loving thing to do. They need to know about these oils that God has created for us. And also Ashley's been really good about helping me to bring those folks in. I mean, it's like I had these, all these people coming in and going, Ashley, help. Yeah. So I thought, you know, I gotta reach these people, these people that God had put into my circle of friends. So after praying about it, I thought, well, of course, anointing with the biblical oils for healing. I'd already offered a couple of these in-person events before COVID hit. So the foundation was already there. And after putting it all together, I thought, this is duplicatable. My team can use this and so can other young living brand partners. So that's how this training got started. How do I see the future? Well, when we work together as a team, the possibilities are endless. So I think you're going to be absolutely in love with the idea of offering the biblical oils in this way in your, to your own circle of friends or in your community. So when you plug into the biblical tradition of anointing training, you'll learn how I plan, organize and advertise my own in-person events. You receive the actual workshop content that I use. The course is three, a three-week training where you will learn how to create your own in-person event and it will be broken down in little baby steps, I promise. I think you'll be amazed at how it all fits together too, when you get to the end, when you get it all done. So each week, you will go through lessons on your own and then we'll have an end of the week live call where we will go over everything that you've learned that week, answer any questions that might pop up and then do a little brainstorming and maybe some surprise training. When you offer your, excuse me, when you offer your workshop, whether it be in your living room or in a community center or in the church setting, you will be following in the footsteps of the first century disciples. You will be teaching others about the healing ministry of anointing and you will be bringing God's healing touch back into the faith community. You know, the first century church met in homes of believers. That's, that's where the church was. And we also know that wherever two or more are gathered in Jesus' name, there he is among them. So either way, in your living room or in a teaching center, in your community or in the church, you will be bringing God's healing touch to those who are ready to receive. Plus, you'll be able to grow your faith-based young living team. I've also just opened up a new Facebook group, so you'll have access to that community as well. It's called the Purpose Driven Oily Life. It's a new TYL gathering place. And so if you've got questions along the way, that's where you can ask them. I may be a pastor, but I do love all the techie stuff too. So I'm already thinking about new ways that we can link arms and work smarter as TYL and with our Get Oiling sites. Okay, so in my training, you'll receive everything you need to effectively lead a one-day workshop or spiritual retreat. We can go into that in a minute, but first, let's focus in on this. What I want you to do is I want you to grab one of your favorite oils. Mine is frankincense. And we're going to oil it. Y'all know how to do this. So put a drop of oil in your hand. Rub your hands together. I need this. I need this right now. I need this calming. Okay. And then breathe in deeply. I like three. Good trinitarian number. Okay, so that's yours on. Time to imagine. Imagine yourself leading a fun experiential workshop where people are encouraged to bring their bibles along with the willingness to participate in the reading of scripture. Imagine a workshop where everyone can enjoy a casual time of learning, take in the aromas of several biblical oils, learn about the benefits of incorporating the sacred tradition of anointing into a daily practice of stillness and leave with a spiritual enrichment that may not have been anticipated. Imagine your organization growing as people in your workshop fall in love with the oils and are filled with the desire to share the wonderful gift of anointing with others, just as you have shared with them. You know, God does work in mysterious ways, especially when we surrender to Him. So we don't really know, you know, how He might choose to work within us or through our businesses or through our vocations. The biblical tradition of anointing workshop training includes my step-by-step instructions, the workshop outline that I use, 53 pages, access to my blessings for spiritual enrichment video, plus my printable prayer cards. It also includes a bundle for your Get Oiling website with an invitation landing page and a confirmation page. You'll also get my workshop handouts that you can personalize and oils of ancient scripture customizable brochure, two sets of class notes, plus a bonus training to personalize your handouts using Canva and Word. And if that's not enough, you, I've also put together some helpful marketing materials for you, including a customizable workshop flyer for the faith community and my leader's guide for pastors like me. Basically, everything I need for my in-person events is included. And this is a goldmine. This is a goldmine in and of itself. It's packed full of valuable tools that you will be able to use for other workshops or other spiritual retreats that you might want to put together. Okay, so plug into the training. Let's get started. Can't wait to work with you on growing your faith-based young living team.
Wonderful. Paula, I'm so excited to actually go over and show some of what you've done so folks can see what this looks like. So just to kind of recap here and you guys, we'll send you the replay when we're done. If you need to go back and recap anything that Paula has just said, we just got some fun questions in here about more, more technical stuff that we'll get to, Kim, at the close of the call, production-related questions, flattering ones. So, so just to kind of set the stage here, you are, you before COVID, were hosting these, these workshops. And you know, when we were talking the other day, Paula, you mentioned that sort of the origin of this specific workshop was actually born in more of a retreat setting. It was, it actually came out of a more intensive thing, right?
Yes, it was actually a two-day retreat that I did in East Texas for one of the churches there. And then I also did a, like a half-day training, but it was really condensed, more, more condensed than what I'm offering here. So this one is actually a one-day workshop. It's probably going to take three, maybe four hours, depending on, you know, how many questions you answer and, you know, the folks there, but at least three hours. So I suggest having it in the morning, break for lunch, and then, you know, finishing up in the afternoon.
I think that's so wonderful because what, what we're talking about here, and I think that is, this is important, especially for those of us who have been around, you know, since the, you know, since the dawn of Essential Oils 101 classes. This is not a 45-minute, let me show you all of the kit kind of class. This really is a deep dive for folks who are really interested in, in having scriptural study and to have this experiential event. So this is I think really special on a number of levels because it's what, what you're talking about here, what you do and what you're offering really the blueprint for with, with what you're sharing here today is, is not something that's purely promotional, right? This isn't a, let me teach you about oils so you can buy a kit. You are actually connecting faith with, with an ancient practice. You actually do teach the, the anointing, like you do actual anointing in this class, right?
Yes, yes. You'll be able to ask a volunteer to come forward and you'll do the, the anointing as they would do it in biblical times. Yes, using the oils. And I mean, this is, this is, the oils are so important. It's, it's all about what God has created to work within the human body for our healing and for our benefit. And so that's really my focus. I really want people to know that these are out there and that God has created them for them. And so that's what's most important to me. And then, of course, they fall in love with the oils and want to know how to get them. One secret that I have is, you know, if you're talking to a pastor, take your beholder of frankincense with you. It's just amazing how pastors love frankincense. Put one drop in their hand and, you know, they're sold.
Is that how that happened for you?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, I've got actually a, a three-week, similar to this course signed up now because I put, I took my frankincense and put one drop in both the pastor's hands and, you know, they loved it.
That's incredible. So, so what we're talking about here is a course that you've created. It's in the Get Oiling, it's in your Get Oiling member area, right? And, and inside of this, you have all of the teaching materials. You also have the marketing materials, right? And, and insights on how maybe you, you can go and approach a pastor if you've never approached a pastor before with your frankincense to offer your oils of ancient scripture workshop in the church, right?
Exactly. Yes, pastors are different. You know, pastors may not be the easiest audience to reach, but well, I think if you reach one or two, you've got a goldmine. If you reach six, you've got a royal crown goldmine.
Yes, without a doubt. And so if you, so when, inside of this course, inside of what you've created, and we'll be sharing and showing this to you guys in just a moment, but I want to kind of break this down. So if you're interested in having, hosting these types of workshops, this really is sort of a one-stop shop. It's all of the materials. You're shown how to customize. You're shown how to reach the pastor, how to share, or even if it's not a pastor, right? This can be done in other places in your community. So there's insight on marketing. There's also resources for your Get Oiling system. So if you wanted to have people register on a landing page, for instance, you've got that included in this as well?
Yes, yes, that's included in this first training. Yes.
Excellent. And so you've got a three-module course that is essentially focused on you being able to host these events in your community.
Correct. Yes, that's, that is right.
That's, so, so that's the basis of it, guys. So you don't have to have a good oiling site to do this. Obviously, the resources that she's provided to you will make your life easier in hosting these things. But, but this is something that's available to all of the Young Living Brand Partner community or just young, like Young Living community generally, if you want to host a workshop like this, you're going to want to check out what we'll be showing you here shortly. Now, for Get Oiling users specifically, there is a, an additional piece that you've created that is particularly compelling, I think. Can you tell us just a little bit about that?
Sure. After you've completed modules one, two, and three, you will unlock my optional add-on training where if you choose to do this one, this is optional, you'll learn how to create a seven-week online evergreen Bible study for your website. You'll then be able to do what I'm doing, using the lesson videos, the ones that I will teach you how to create, using those videos in a live Zoom call study. Or people can actually plug into your study on their own and use it individually, maybe in a Sunday School class setting or in a home group setting. Your team could actually use your online videos. They could do a seven-week study or just one week. They could invite their friends into their home, introduce themselves and of course, young living, and then show one of the lesson videos from your website on their TV and pass around the oils, discuss the provided study guide questions if they like, and then help others get started with the natural living lifestyle. All of this, plus three additional live call sessions is included in the second course. So recap, the optional course, the optional course will be unlocked once you complete modules one, two, and three. You can't do the second training without the first because the second course piggybacks on the first, but you don't have to do both trainings. The first one is a standalone training where you'll gain some incredible information about the biblical tradition of anointing. Plus, you will be well on your way to becoming an effective presenter of the biblical oils in a way that will be irresistibly attractive to laity and faith leaders alike. The second training, training is only for those who want to kick it up a notch. Modules one, two, and three, the first course will teach you how to make your one-day in-person event. And module four, the second course, will teach you how to take that work into a seven-week online study for your website. Okay, so if you've already decided that you want to kick it up a notch, module four includes my step-by-step training, a bigger Get Oiling bundle with a vault, a class, an invitation landing page and a confirmation page. And you will learn all my secrets to creating your lesson videos, editing them and then branding them with your own personalized logo. You'll also learn to create an exclusive password-protected discussion area for your leaders in your study. But wait, there's more. In module four, you'll receive the companion study guide that I personally created for the online class, plus the actual class script in a PowerPoint slideshow. Or if you prefer to use a teleprompter app, you know, like on your iPad, I've just completed the script for that as well.
Wow. Wow, wow, wow. Okay, so who wants to see this? Who wants to see the work that Paula's been doing? Show me some hands. I know, look at them, look at the hands, they're flying. All right. Okay, let's look. All right. So first, just so you guys know that Paula is doing some pretty incredible stuff. This is her Get Oiling website. Absolutely beautiful. And actually, if you go to paula barans.com, you can see the biblical tradition of anointing mentioned right here. But let's, let's actually go over here and look at, if you go to, what is, what is the URL for this? What did I put?
Anointingworkshop.com.
That's right. Anointingworkshop.com will take you straight to this page. All right. And so you can see everything spelled out that Paula has been sharing today that is included in this course. You get into, you actually share insights on how to be a better storyteller as well, right?
I thought we needed that. I know, I, you know, I've been telling stories for over 20 years, but biblical stories. I really didn't focus in on my own stories. So that's what we'll focus in on here, stories that you can use in your workshop.
Excellent. I'm typing in this anointingworkshop.com in our comments so everybody can go ahead and come over here and check it out. Oh, another thing. Oh, this is really important for everybody who's here right now and for a pretty limited time. This is a live launch. So Paula, what will that look like if somebody gets started before? I don't, I don't see the date in front of you, but what's, what is the start date? And what does this mean for people who decide to get started right now?
Yeah, if you jump into the course right now, before the end of the month, then you'll save $30 on, for the live launch. And the live launch starts the first week of September. We're in August, yeah, September. The first three weeks, it'll start that Monday. And we will have our call, our three calls, those first three weeks. And then if you want to jump into the second module for training, you will be given the, the information for that in the first training. You'll have a week between the two training courses to maybe catch up on things that, that possibly you're not completely caught up on yet. And then the second module for training will start the first week of October.
I love it. And you guys, you can actually see a sort of preview and learn more, right? You, this, this video that you put here that I just scrolled past on the page, is this a little bit about the course itself or is this the excerpt that we had talked about?
It's actually, it's actually a little clip of the way I'm using the, the online video classes, lessons that I made and how I use that to do a Zoom call, a live Zoom call study.
Okay. Excellent. Yeah. So for those of you who are interested in hosting events like this online, getting through modules one through three, so you've got your practice in place, you're going to want to get to module four because you're going to have all of Paula's tools to, to actually take this online, right? I love this. You're offering opening and closing prayer suggestions. If you've never, if you've never facilitated a class like this, maybe you aren't a pastor like Paula is, but you want to be able to facilitate this in your community. You're going to have Paula to help you to, to figure out what those things are for opening and closing. There's questions, Q and A. This isn't just a course, basically. It's, you know, for, for this initial launch, there's going to be really a live sort of workshop environment here where you've got access to Paula and her insights. We've got questions about your branding. Yeah, isn't it beautiful, you guys? Now you use Canva, right? Like you're just basically Canva on your Good Oil site, right?
Yes, I, once I, once I found Canva, I was cooked on Canva.
Yes, you've done such beautiful work. And you guys, I highly, highly recommend that you come over, check out paula barans.com, head to anointingworkshop.com so that you can come learn more about what's being offered. Now, one other thing that, that we want to definitely chat about here, because obviously we're talking about something that you all can come over to anointingworkshop.com and purchase. There's also a free thing that we're giving away, right? That, that you've, that you've offered up here called the Art of Centering Prayer. Can you tell us more about this? This is actually a resource for people who have Get Oiling for your Good Oil site, right?
Yeah, 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 right. So while you're thinking about all of this, go ahead and grab my free bundle. It's called the Art of Centering Prayer. It includes a custom page for your Get Oiling website with a five-minute prayer video on that page. Plus, there's a landing page, that's your lead magnet, a confirmation page and a follow-up campaign. And my guide that's called the Art of Centering Prayer, which is a PDF that you can customize and brand to yourself in Canva.
Guys, this is a free funnel. Paula is giving you guys a free funnel. So if you go to anointingworkshop.com, you can also get access to this completely free resource, this funnel resource. And there's a video from you, right? So it's not branded to you, right? But this is you as Pastor Paula.
It is me leading you through five minutes of prayer. You won't see my face, but you'll hear my voice and it's not branded to me. So I mean, it's, it's going to be on your website, but it won't say my name on it.
Hmm, that's so cool. Are you guys excited about that? Who's excited about having like this, like a video and a funnel like done? Come get this, you guys, right? Too much. Yes, Lynn, that's right. Too much. So good. So there was a question here because you do have special pricing right now. If we scroll down to the bottom here, we can see what that looks like. There is already applied a $30 discount. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so when you sign up prior to August 30th or buy what, whatever the time and date is there for you on August 30th, then, then you're going to have that special pricing and be a part of this, this live workshop version of this course.
That's correct. Yes. Yeah, you sign up before the course actually starts. Once the course starts, you know, we're in the course. So that's a deadline.
Beautiful, beautiful. Well, so if you guys have any questions, make sure that you are putting those into the Q and A so that we don't miss them. Anointingworkshop.com. Come over here and check out what Paula has put on offer for you guys to unite oils, anointing, your spiritual practice and bringing these things to your community to build community. And of course, it's just a beautiful way to share young living. So, all right, there's, okay, so we can get into more of these, more of these Q and A questions here. And then I'm happy to, you know, get into anything further. Kim asked, what, she says, hi, how do you and Paula look so great? What lighting do you use? Any special apps?
Oh, I teach that in the second training, exactly what I.
Well, now you know, you guys, Paula will teach you how to light yourself as she has done, which is excellent. So, so definitely check this out. Second module, learn how to do it. Perfect. Um, just in terms of what I use, just because I do the webinar stuff all the time. A lot of people have like a ring light and they'll put their phone or their camera in the middle of it. But because I'm so often on a screen, in a screen, I just have a camera just up on top of my Monster Mac. And I've got two lights on my desktop that are shining in a ring light and another one that I think would normally be on top of the camera. I don't know. It's, it's like a $40 rig off of Amazon that I think I created three, four years ago. So play around with it, but you don't have to, you know, you don't have to dump a ton of money into good lighting or get specialized equipment. Monster Mac, yes, Alison, I do. I have the big, big. Monster Mac, yes, Allison, I do. I have the big, big, yes. It means I can do all the things at once. I can't work on a laptop anymore. It's just too small. Um, all right, uh, Kim was also curious, um, how you were able to read your notes without looking down. That's such a good question.
That's part of my secret that I'm teaching in the second training.
There you go. So these are, these are in module four.
Yeah, I sort of hinted at it with the teleprompter.
Hmm, okay.
I give you the script, I give you the script that you can use with a teleprompter. And so you are actually looking uh, right in the camera when you're speaking. And I mean, you can't memorize all this, all of this for your classes. I mean, it's a huge amount of information. So, um, you know, online, you can just look right into the camera. Um, I have other tricks for whenever you're in person and what to do there.
Okay, Sean asked, uh, if your class, uh, gives us any time of certification. I'm not a hundred percent sure what you mean by that. But just so, you know, just, just to kind of branch off of that question, and perhaps this is related, Sean, please feel free to clarify, uh, so that we can answer your question more effectively. Uh, but, um, how much time, uh, would someone be maybe devoting to getting this developed? Because you're gonna be running this for three weeks, right? And then a week off or two. Uh, so in those three weeks, about how much time would someone need to invest on a, you know, daily or weekly basis to be able to be prepared to have their first workshop launched?
Okay, the first week is, is pretty light, because I give you time to, uh, get all of your supplies, your oils and everything that you're going to need in your in-person workshop together. But we will go over the storytelling. So we're gonna work on that and getting our, everything together and getting the registration and everything set up for your workshop. The second week is pretty intense. Um, you will be watching probably one, maybe two videos a day. They're not that long. I think most of them are around fifteen minutes. I think the longest one is around thirty minutes. So you'll watch those and, um, and you'll be, um, following that. So, I mean, what, probably if you could set aside an hour each day the second week, and then the third week is a little bit lighter than the, than the second week.
Okay.
That's, that's for the first training. Now, for the second training, the second training, I mean, you're kicking it up a notch. So you might be spending a little bit more time because you're actually creating your own videos. You're gonna be creating seven videos plus your introductory video that I'm going to teach you how to do. So you'll be spending time on actually creating your video, videos in the second course.
Hey guys, when she's talking about the second part, like the second course, that is this optional add-on that will be offered to you as a separate thing once you've gone through this first piece. Uh, because basically what she's doing in this second, this optional add-on is showing you how to take this thing that you've just created, that you know, you now know how to use, and put it into something that's more leveraged, right? So that's where you, you take this thing that works and you take it online. Um, really, really exciting stuff there. And that means that in that second part of this, that we're not even really talking about today in terms of details, because you gotta get the first one to get that one, uh, is, you know, if you want to know how Paula does all of the internet stuff, basically, like, that's where you're gonna learn it. You know, the lighting, the all of that. So there, there was a, um, a suggested clarification, um, and, and really, really good point about continuing education credits. Uh, Lynn, uh, that's probably what you meant. You aren't offering any kind of like certifications or anything like that from this training, right?
You know, I hadn't even thought about that, but no, I haven't, I haven't even looked into that, see if that would be possible. Uh, you know, for a pastor that may, might need those credits, I don't, maybe I should do a little investigating, but at this point, no.
Okay, um, there was a question, and please, guys, just to make sure that I don't lose this, I did catch yours, Kathy. What time of the day do you think your trainings are going to be held when you do this live, Paula?
Okay, I have them set up for Fridays at two o'clock central time. So that's the plan. I do have, I've been, uh, called to jury duty on Tuesday of the first week, so pray that I. Um, if, if that's the case, we might have to shift that time to a different time.
Okay, okay. And, um, will the, the lives be recorded for those who are?
Yes, they will be recorded and they'll be put in, on a page in the vault, um, for, uh, you know, anybody that wants to go back and, and do a recap or, you know, review, or even for, if, if we do another live, if we do another launch after this one, which is a possibility, uh, then they would still stay in there from the previous course.
Excellent. Yeah, and just so you guys know, the, the course is already there. Um, it's these additional support live calls uh, that are part of the live piece. So you can get access to this and you've just got it, like, go through it. It's gonna be available like that in perpetuity, but if you want to have Paula's time, right? If you want to be present and to have that support, you're gonna want to do this now. See a bunch of people who are, ah, I did it, I'm in, I'm in, that's so exciting. Let us know you're in in the comments if you have already signed up. So excited to see you guys do this. Um, let me see. All right, so, uh, Allison had a question on deciding on the price of your course. Not specifically about this course, but like, um, like what kind of guidance do you consult to like determine what you would charge for? A course that may be a conversation for another, um, another training, but if you'd like to share anything to that end.
Well, I can tell you what I did. I basically just looked to see what other people were charging, and I mean, it's just all over the place. Um, and then I prayed about it. That's when I made my decision, is after prayer. I'm a pastor.
Yes, and, and Australia was, was asking, uh, your denomination, uh, you're United Methodist, right?
United Methodist, yes. I, I serve for over twenty years. I, I'm actually a second, second career pastor, so my children were grown when I went into being a pastor, yes.
That's so cool. I want to have a whole other, like, session where we're just talking about, like, how you, like, I, we just want to hear from, if anybody else want to have, just like, let's sit and chat with Paula time, please, because I would super like to do that. Look at all the hands. Um, okay, so the live sessions, uh, it really depends on where you are in Europe, uh, or where you are in the world. Uh, but, uh, as it stands right now, it seems that it would be, uh, two central time US, uh, would be when those live calls are. Okay, um, let me see, what else, what else? Uh, how much extra are the video editing, Canva, et cetera, to make this work? So, um, I, I can say, Lynn, that, um, I don't know all of Paula's, like, all of the things that are included in here, but there's always a way. There's always, always a way. So Canva has a free, a free, uh, level, and there are, if you're not prepared to invest in Canva, there are ways to use what they have for free that work beautifully, right? And for video, the, you know, you know what I do, you guys? And we do this every week. We get on Zoom, which is included with your good oiling subscription. We hit record. And now I have a video on my computer that I go and I open it in, I, I don't even know what the name of the player is. It's not paid-for software. It's, it's native to the machine, Quick Timer, so I, I forget. I open it up. Yeah, I tell it trim, I drag it, and then I upload it to YouTube, and it's done. It's free. So there's, um, that's actually a totally free thing. Um, there are ways to make this work. And Paula, I'm sure, have you, like, you've probably mentioned with video uploading and hosting and things like that, a couple of different options in the secondary module, this one right here.
Yes, um, I use Pomora, but you can probably take what I teach there and use it in any of the editing, uh, tools you have. There, a lot of them are very, very similar. Pomora does have some really fancy bells and whistles. Um, and we'll, you know, we will do the, the branding and stuff in there, but I'm sure you can do it on the other one, other apps too.
Hmm.
Well, I'm not sure, but I think you can.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So with, with video on our platform generally, we recommend that if it's meant to be something that's kept private, that's not for leads, uh, that you use like Vimeo or Wistia, we use Vimeo. Um, but that doesn't mean that you can't use an unlisted YouTube video if that's what you need to do right now. Like, that's totally fine. There's always a way. Really great question here from Jenny. Uh, she says, I've been drawn to teach oils of the Bible and combining it with my AFT practice. How do you help laypeople, not pastors, uh, get past the fear that they aren't qualified to teach this stuff?
Okay, well, that's basically in, uh, the, the first three modules, we learned there. We're teaching people that it is, uh, biblically, uh, correct, that all of us are priests. And we, uh, we have the authority to anoint, uh, uh, you know, people and, and bless them. And so, um, I think that probably would, would calm some people's nerves. It might think, oh, this is only something that a pastor can do. I mean, we are all, uh, called to be priests in the body of Christ. If you are in the body of Christ, you, you are a priest already. And we go through the scripture, scripture passages and things like that, so that you'll understand where that comes from.
Hmm, and I think, I think it's an important thing. We're talking about, uh, the tradition of anointing, the ancient tradition of anointing, right? This is not something that is, uh, denomina- uh, denominationally oriented, right? This is about the ancient tradition.
Exactly, and a lot of the denominations have forgotten all about this wonderful means of grace that God offers to us um, and don't really use the anointing with oils, or if they do, they'll use just olive oil. They're not, they're not aware of the healing properties of the essential oils that come from the plants that God created for us for our healing and our benefit. And so they, I mean, pastors can learn a whole lot in this training as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so just to, to clarify, Bertha asked, um, this does start, uh, the live sessions start on the sixth of September. Uh, but if, if you would like to get the, uh, the thirty-dollar discount, uh, that is valid through August thirtieth.
Well, I put that on there, but I mean, if you get in before that Monday, then I'll still, it'll still be up.
Okay, okay.
It's hard for me to take things away.
I hear you. I'm the same way. That's awesome. All right, so, so you will, you will have that grace. Uh, if, uh, if, if it is closer to the start date, but basically before you start live, um, you'll be able to get that.
Before the, uh, before the, um, let's see, it starts on the sixth, so before the fifth, the fifth, I think, is Sunday. So, you know, get in the week before that.
Mm-hmm, perfect. Uh, so, yeah, so you guys, uh, there's no coupon code to, uh, to remember. This is going to be applied automatically, uh, when you get started. Um, definitely, definitely, you guys head over here and check this out. You can go to paula barons dot com to check out Paula's beautiful page. And then, of course, come over here, uh, to learn more about this at anointingworkshop.com, anointingworkshop.com. And while you're here, first, of course, head over here and grab all of these resources. But once you've done that, head back to anointingworkshop.com and grab the, um, the free funnel that she's made for you guys, which is, I stopped scrolling, this one right up here, The Art of Centering Prayer, uh, which is really, really exciting. So, um, did you say each class time is an hour long, Sylvia asked?
Um, are you asking about the, the, the class that you'll be going through, or the class that you will be presenting?
That's a good clarification. I think because we've been talking so much about the, um, the live calls, that might be it. But, um, but these are the actual lessons in the class, though. I mean, those are, those are probably broken up a little smaller than an hour, right?
Oh, they are. Uh, the, the videos in the classes are, I think, around fifteen minutes. I think there might be one or two that's longer, maybe thirty minutes, but most of them are pretty short. And then you're doing the work yourself. So, you know, um, you, you, you watch the video, you read the instructions, you do the work, and then you come back the next day and you, uh, you know, do it again.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, so you guys can walk through and see, uh, the first module. She's gonna show you everything going to be covered there. Um, identifying what you need to host these workshops, organizing the registration process, getting your schedule in place, and then becoming that confident, effective storyteller so you could lead the workshop. Um, she'll have a live call about this content specifically, uh, that first week to share stories, talk about materials, get your questions answered, so you're confident about getting this done. Then your next week, you're gonna plan, you're gonna go over all of these concepts together, and again, have a call that week. Get insights from Paula as you're doing the work. You'll have that opportunity to get your questions answered, uh, to get help uh, and to get clarity so that you can go out there and launch your workshops, which is what you'll do in module three, again, with a call from Paula included, uh, where you can, um, I'm sure, submit questions ahead of time if you are not in, uh, you know, in a time zone that's amenable to the time that you guys will be live. So, uh, you guys, anointingworkshop.com, gotta come check it out. Uh, Australia says, this is amazing. My heart has been yearning to incorporate ancient practice with oils. This is being received. Thank you. Uh, there was another beautiful comment here that I'm, I see. There's another one I wanted to share, but I cannot find it. Um, just a lot of, um, here we go. Lynn, I was called here today, did not have this on the plan, and I want to say grace appears. Love it, love it, love it.
Yeah, and don't forget the Facebook group too, because whenever you're in the training, you get into the Facebook group. And I mean, you know how Facebook groups are, you can type questions in there all the time, and I'll be there to, to help with that too, and maybe do some extra training there.
Ooh, yes, yes, yes. Bertha says, the masses need this. It is up to us to spread the word. I love it. I love it, I love it. So you guys, uh, I know there were some questions about what is the Facebook group? The Facebook group is actually something you get access to when you sign up. So if you go to, uh, to Paula's site here and you check this out, you get started, you're gonna get access to the, the Facebook group, which is, um, it's like a student group for this, um, for this course, right?
Correct, yes.
Excellent. All right. Was there anything else that you would love to share? Uh, or, or, you know, just kind of say here and wrapping up. And then, of course, if anybody's here that needs assistance with anything today, needs help with anything, we're more than happy, uh, to, to do that.
Okay, so before you make your decision, I suggest that you take a little time with the Lord, trusting in him to guide you, right? I mean, we should always do that. But this thing's bigger than all of us. Uh, when you choose to share and teach about the biblical tradition of anointing with oils for healing, then you are continuing the work of the first disciples. Here's the thing, God created the plants for our healing. We see that in Ezekiel forty-seven, twelve, and Revelation twenty-two-two. And God gave us the wisdom to extract the aromatic oils for our benefit. God instructed Moses and the priests to use the oils in Old Testament times. Jesus instructed the first disciples to use the oils in New Testament times. And I believe that especially with all that's going on in the world today, that anointing with the healing oils we have access to absolutely needs to be taught in our faith communities more than ever before. And you can be a part of making that happen. Um, it'll be a win for the community around you, and it will be a win for you and for your young living organization. Okay, I'm so excited about what God has planned for you, for your team, and for your community.
Paula, we're so honored to have you here today, and I don't know if you've been checking out the chat, but you definitely should check out the chat. Uh, we've got a lot of amens, a lot of gratitude, a lot of folks who are just really, really feeling this right now. Uh, I'm so, so excited that you've created and, and, and shared, decided to share this resource. Um, because, yeah, you don't, you don't, you don't hide this under a bushel, right? You, you share this.
That's biblical, Ashley.
I know. Aren't you proud? I grew up with the Methodist church too. So, yes, uh, Merle, Paula Barons, I'll go ahead and type, uh, I'll type in our chat here, her main website, if you want to see her good oiling site. All right, paula barons dot com. And then, of course, you guys, and I've put this in the chat as well, anointingworkshop.com. Uh, so, so excited to feature this to you guys. I can't wait to hear all of the amazing stories of, uh, of, of good work that you do with this. Um, and, yeah, just, just amazing. Paula, thank you, thank you so much for, for being here and for sharing this with us.
Thank you for inviting me. I'm excited. God is good. I am blessed.
All the time. So, so, um, oh, we've got more well-done Paula, color on the website is so beautiful. We got, we got the kind of a chat party happening over here. Um, so, uh, so, yeah, if anybody has questions, Greg, I, I guess if, if the floor is open, uh, there's definitely been a couple of updates that you've made, uh, to, to the platform that we can maybe take a few moments to chat about while we're still here. Um, you guys, just one, one last call, anointingworkshop.com, uh, you're gonna want to head over there and, and take advantage of the free funnel that Paula has created for you, the Centering Prayer, uh, funnel, uh, as well as, of course, this incredible workshop, uh, that she's giving you a promotional price on, uh, through, uh, early September. So, um, anointingworkshop.com, check it out. So Greg, uh, can we give the, like, is, you want to show and tell a little bit? We've got, like.
Yeah, there's.
Questions answered.
That's awesome. Um, let's see here, let me share this out. So, yeah, there's been, I guess, a little updates in the contact manager. You probably may have noticed these, um, and, by the way, thank you, Paula. It's great today. While I have the floor here, so. Anyway, yeah, so this week it's just something, a, a simple change, a little more, uh, some formatting changes inside the contact manager here to make things a little bit better, both here, um, on the desktop as well as like a mobile device. The, uh, actions button, I think was previously white. The actions button, I think was previously white. Um, so it was a little harder for people to find. And that's kind of a very, you know, common action here. So the, change the colors here a little bit and I'll show you like, and, and now the screen looks a little bit nicer. It's a little bit more usable when you shrink it down to mobile, like the button becomes really big and a lot easier to tap when you're on a, on a mobile device. Uh, and so, yeah, just kind of clean this up, made it look a little bit better. Went through some of these, uh, the filters here, I believe this, um, you know, this pop-up box here works a little bit better on mobile. It uses some of the built-in native controls, if you will, on your device. So anyway, there's been just, that's kind of the quicker update there. You know, there's going to be some further changes here with the mobile usability in the coming weeks. But, uh, that's kind of the, I think the last thing since, you know, we chatted about, I think it was last week, we chatted about the pictures in the member area was the other last change. So, but yeah, that's, uh, that was the change this week.
Excellent. All right. Well, if you guys, uh, don't have any questions, uh, then, then we could certainly, uh, break early. You guys head over to anointingworkshop.com and get yourself set up, uh, to start hosting your own oils of ancient scripture workshops. Let's go, um, Brady Bunch. Uh, we have a, like a baby party, like we've been having baby parties lately and this, this one's mine. But, um, yeah, excited to have you guys here and, uh, yep, look at all those babies. All right. Uh, thank you again to Paula. Uh, thank you, you guys, you amazing community. We do this for you and we're here every week. We'll be back next week, same time. Really, really wonderful having you here. If you're not in our Facebook group, you guys, definitely make sure you go and join. And you meet other people in this community who are doing amazing things. Cause I can tell you, there are some people doing amazing things in this community. So, you know, get to know each other, learn from each other. I really hope that you'll go take advantage of what Paula has put together to share with you guys this week. There's more to come and we look forward to, uh, seeing you guys on the next live session. Thank you again, Paula.
Thank you. Blessings, blessings to everyone.
All right. And we'll see you guys next week.
Bye.